All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the 1,617th Regular Meeting of the Thornton City Council. And before we begin, just like to remind everyone in the audience to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Also, if there's anyone in the audience who needs assistance in listening to and/or participating in the meeting and has not indicated so on the sign-up sheet, you can raise your hand and a staff member will assist you. Item two is a pledge of allegiance. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is a moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Item four is the land acknowledgement. Councilmember Russell, would you please read the land acknowledgement this evening?
Yes. The city of Thornton respectfully acknowledges the land on which we stand as the traditional territory of the Apache, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Comanche, Kiowa, Lakota, Navajo, Pueblo, Shoshone, and Southern Ute tribes and the nations who were the original stewards of this land. We honor the history, culture, and contributions, both past and present of these indigenous nations and tribes. We pay respect to their ancestors, elders, and present-day community members, and extend our gratitude to the indigenous people for their ongoing care and stewardship of the land, water, and resources. We also recognize the lasting impact of colonialism, forced removals, and continued injustices that have affected indigenous communities throughout the history and into the present. We also acknowledge the labor of enslaved Africans and their descendants who worked on this stolen land for the colonists and who continue to disproportionately face economic oppression, racism, violence, and exploitation. May this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our responsibility to be mindful and respectful of the land, its history, and the indigenous communities who call Colorado home, and to use it to guide our policies and decision-making for the people of Thornton.
Thank you. Item five is the roll call of council. Clerk, would you please call the roll of council?
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Councilmember Rukinto?
Here.
Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Mayor Potem Bigelow?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Sangram?
Here.
Councilmember Unrain?
Here.
Corvus President, Your Honor?
Thank you. Item six is approval of the agenda. Are there any staff changes to the agenda this evening?
Mayor, we'd like to propose removing item 13A, the second reading of an ordinance, and to move that item to September 23rd.
Thank you. Council, are there any additional changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda as amended has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item seven is presentations. Item 7A is a resolution commending Jessica Jensen for her service on the Businesses of Thornton Advisory Commission. Councilmember Sangram, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Thank you. I introduce a resolution commending Jessica Jensen for her service on the Business of Thornton Advisory Commission, whereas Jessica Jensen served as a member of the Business of Thornton Advisory Commission from December 6, 2016, to March 1, 2025. And whereas Jessica Jensen's service in the Business of Thornton Advisory Commission was marked by a strong record of attendance and accomplishments, and whereas Jessica Jensen played a leading role in many important decisions involving but not limited to grants, recognition awards, code updates, special events, and safety measures. And whereas Jessica Jensen served with distinction in the capacity of chairperson and vice-chairperson of the Business of Thornton Advisory Commission. And whereas, commissions serve a vital role in advising city council and/or making decisions on behalf of the city council with regard to important issues that impact the everyday lives of those throughout the community. And whereas Jessica Jensen's involvement, dedication, and leadership contributed to the success of the Business of Thornton Advisory Commission, city council, and the city as a whole. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado as follows, that the city council wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation for Jessica's leadership role, time, involvement, knowledge, and distinguished service to the Business of Thornton Advisory Commission, city council, and to the Thornton community. And I move for its approval.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sangram, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Thank you. I will just say thank you directly to Jessica. I've watched her over the years on that board at different meetings. I've also seen her just in other community events, so she definitely took part in making sure that she advocated for Thornton but was also just a person out in the community advocating as a whole for business members. So, thank you for your service and your time, and I'm sure I'll see you in the community at another event.
Any additional discussion? I'm going to hold mine for just a moment. All right. Would you please poll the council?
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And at this time, I would invite Jessica to join me in front of the dais. Let me try again. There we go. Thank you. It's always a great honor to be able to recognize those that contribute so much to our community, and spending 11 years on this committee is a pretty impressive task. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the residents, on behalf of the city council, for everything that you've done for our business community and for our community in whole. And would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Yes, I would just say I really appreciated the opportunity to get involved with VTAC. It's an amazing group of local business owners and representatives, and it's supported by the amazing economic development staff for the city of Thornton. So, I'm sad to be leaving the group, but I know it's in really great hands, and I appreciate the opportunity to get involved. Thank you.
Let's give her a round of applause. I guess we're getting some feedback that it's hard for people online to hear us, so I'm not sure if that's something we can check on the Zoom link while we continue. Item 7B is a resolution commending Anna Sparks for her service on the Development Permits and Appeals Board and Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments. Councilmember Russell, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Happy to do so. So I'd like to introduce a resolution commending Anna Sparks for her service on the Development Permits and Appeals Board and Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments, whereas Anna Sparks served as a member of the Development Permits and Appeals Board from January 27, 2015, to December 31, 2023. And whereas Anna Sparks served as a member of the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment from January 1, 2024, to June 15, 2025. Whereas Anna Sparks's service with the Development Permits and Appeals Board and Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments was marked by a fine record of attendance and accomplishments. Whereas Anna Sparks played a lead role in many important decisions involving the granting or denying of various special use permits, development permits, various annexations, zoning applications, and conceptual site plan requests. And whereas Anna Sparks served with distinction in the capacity of chairperson and vice-chairperson of the Development Permits and Appeals Board and as chairperson of the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments. And whereas Anna Sparks's leadership and service to the Development Permits and Appeals Board and Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments have been a valuable contribution to the city. Now therefore, it be resolved by the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado as follows, that the city council wishes to express to Anna Sparks its gratitude and appreciation for her leadership role, time, involvement, knowledge, and distinguished service to the Development Permits and Appeals Board and Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments and to the citizens of Thornton, and I move for its approval.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Russell, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Well, yes. So I personally know Anna because when I started doing some work here with the city, it was on the Development Permits and Appeals Board. The one thing I can say for Anna is I was somewhat a fish out of water at that time, but she provided a lot of guidance. She gave me tips, she advised, I mean, everything that one needs to be successful when you're sitting up here and you have all these fancy controls and you're kind of caught with a deer in headlights at that moment. But with the calmness, she reassured me I was doing fine. You'll get used to it, and that's the type of leadership. She served many times as chair over her time. That's a true sign of a leader, that takes somebody new, inexperienced, guides them, and leads them. And that's just my personal experience. Everything else that I mentioned about the city and all the work that goes into approving site plans and zoning variances, she made it well-known that she did her homework and she came prepared. So it's very much appreciated that she spent the amount of time that she did with the city. I'm very grateful for that friendship, that guidance, and sorry to see you leave, but obviously you'll have some evenings back, and I hope you enjoy those.
Councilmember Sangram?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Anna Sparks as well. I was actually on DPAB when she was on there. It's now the Planning Commission, but I was able to serve alongside Anna and watch her grow in that committee, and just your professionalism, your expertise and knowledge, I was very pleased to watch you grow through there, and I can't believe it's already been time for you to roll off the board. So thank you for your service.
Any additional discussion? Again, I'm going to save my comments for just a moment. Would you please poll the council?
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And at this time, I would invite Anna to join me up in front of the dais. And again, it's such an incredible, rare opportunity to have someone willing to send 10 years on a board. And with your engineering background, you've been able to focus our entire community on things that matter around sustainability and building incredible things in our community and keeping us in line with our strategic plans. So thank you for everything that you've done for us. And before I give you this plaque from the city and thank you on behalf of the residents, is there anything you would like to say?
It's been an honor serving on the board, having that trust of the citizens in Ward Three, helping out, being the eyes in the community where I grew and lived as a citizen volunteer. Little tear choking right now, but it's time. It's time for me to retire from my citizen volunteership, and it's such an honor to be here, to be recognized today. I appreciate the time and patience that you all give me this moment for this sort of closure that I need. Everything is in great hands. The Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments is going well with another chair and is coming out of its infancy strong, just as it took over for DPAB. So you're in great hands there as well.
Thank you. Again, on behalf of the residents and the city council, just want to say thank you, and please give her a round of applause. Item 7C is a resolution recognizing the Thornton Arts, Sciences, and Humanities Council, Board of Directors for Dino Fest. Councilmember Ayala, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce a resolution recognizing the Thor's Arts, Sciences, and Humanities Council Incorporated Board of Directors for Dino Fest, whereas the Thornton Arts, Sciences, Humanities Council, Inc., Tashco Board of Directors, is dedicated to providing cultural enrichment, educational engagement, and community celebration. And whereas the city's first Dino Fest STEM-themed event was successfully presented by the Tashco, Etler, Lou Marie Park, and Thornton Arts and Culture Center on Saturday, August 9, 2025. And whereas Tashco collaborated with the annual Back-to-School Backpack Drive sponsored by Community Connections and the Generational Opportunities on the same day which served over 1,500 people. And whereas Dino Fest involved Tashco Board of Members who helped with event setup and operations along with 34 volunteers at the event gathering and 100 combined hours. And whereas Dino Fest was facilitated by several city departments including Arts and Culture, Parks and Recreation, Streets, Police, the Fire Departments, and Thornton Volunteers. And whereas Dino Fest had 26 unique activity booths provided by various metro partners and over 400 goodie bags and $450 worth of free snacks given away to over 1,000 attendees and raised over $1,000 from Dino Fest t-shirt sales and adopted Dino fundraisers, which will go towards future city events. And whereas Tashco Vice President Sheena Skinner's science background and motivation to see events of this nature was a driving force to make Dino Fest a one-of-a-kind event for the city. And whereas Tashco's dedication has resulted in a vibrant festival that fosters curiosity, inspires learning, and strengthens community bonds. And whereas, Tashco's efforts have enhanced the city's reputation as a place where the arts, sciences, humanities are valued and celebrated. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado as follows, that the city council hereby recognizes Tashco for their hard work, efforts, and contribution which brought Dino Fest to fruition as a new science event that brought community engagement and education and family fun to the city. And I move for its approval.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Ayala, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I was excited to see this event finally come to realization. It had been talked about for many, many years, since back in the day when I was on the Tashco Board of Directors. And it was something that came along in many conversations. I'm looking at folks here, and we kind of geeked out about it many times, thought about how exciting it would be to see kids interact with STEM activities. And I was just thinking about a few years ago, when we first started selling Easter baskets, and we had this dino basket. And I don't know who donated it, but somebody donated this big dino basket, and people were like fighting over this dinosaur basket. And Lauren and I were like, we have to do a Dino Fest sometime because people just love dinosaurs. So, thank you, Sheena, and all the folks who worked on this. I know that it was a huge lift. Any of the events that we started from scratch, from Pride to Juneteenth, and even bringing Dia de los Muertos to life, which is kind of a funny thing to say about Dia de los Muertos. But bringing those events to life takes a lot of work. It takes tons of volunteers. It takes tons of dedication. I've seen ankle sprain. I've seen many tears. And also, I was just looking over here in the audience, and I want to thank Brenda because all of these events, Brenda's kind of the backbone. So I think Tashco would recognize that as well. So, thank you to everybody who participated and helped out, and good work to all of you.
Councilmember Russell?
Yeah, I also wanted to just extend some gratitude. My six-year-old daughter is a huge fan of dinosaurs, and this is such a unique event that made her happy as well as many, many other children. The turnout was remarkable. And additionally, while we're very grateful for the whole team here, as the team knows, there's a member of your team that was unable to make it tonight. She had some medical issues and was hospitalized. And so giving a shout-out to Stacy, who would be here in person to hear everything, but she's gone through it a little bit. So I know she's watching at home, and I definitely wanted to give her some acknowledgements since she's afar this evening. But thank you to all of you for an exceptional event. Much appreciated.
Mayor Potem Bigelow?
Well, Tashco, as always, you knocked it out of the park. Wow. I can't say enough for all of you. I'm so proud of all of the events that you bring to our city. It's gratifying and satisfying at the same time to compare ourselves to other cities and look at the events that we do. I feel like we're top-notch, and this event was out of this world for a first-time-ever event. I just can't even tell you, wow. Thank you so much for your dedication, your time, your service, everything you put into this, and we really appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Any additional discussion? Again, I get to hold mine here for a moment. Would you please poll the council?
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask the members of Tashco here to join us in front of the dais. We have to Superman the shirt so people can see. I have to say, I am always impressed with the amount of work that Tashco does in any event that they do across the city. But I remember a few years ago having a conversation about how Tashco was very focused on the arts and humanities but sometimes left out the science. And STEM in particular was something we talked about, and how STEM and STEAM were so important to the community, and we had to find ways to bring that in. And when this event popped on my calendar, I was like, oh my gosh, we've done it. We have gotten that last piece that we were missing. And from what I hear, because unfortunately I had to go out of town that weekend for a funeral, but it was an incredible event. The kids, the families, all had so much fun, and you guys did a fantastic job. And Brenda, I don't know why you're sitting in the audience because you're going to come up here for the picture too. Please give them all a round of applause. community is with the number of volunteers that we have on all of our committees, to the events that we put on that are staffed by volunteers. We are incredibly lucky in the city of Thornton to have as many great people that want to be part of this as we do. So again, a huge thank you. All right. Item 7D is a resolution declaring August 2025 as National Immunization Awareness Month in the city of Thornton, Colorado. Councilmember Salazar, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
I would like to introduce a resolution declaring August 2025 as National Immunization Awareness Month in the city. Whereas National Immunization Awareness Month is an annual observance to highlight the importance of vaccination for people of all ages. And whereas, many students begin their school year in the month of August, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention encourages parents and caregivers to use this time as a reminder to ensure all immunizations, physicals, and dental health checkups are up to date. And whereas, on-time immunizations can assist with protection against serious diseases. And whereas, city council advocates for the physical and mental well-being of all students, families, and staff. And whereas, city council acknowledges that the academic success of the community's youth is strongly linked with their health. And whereas, it is encouraged to not delay getting care for any health conditions, including vaccinations, well-being checkups, and dental appointments. And whereas, vaccination information, including suggested immunization by age level, can be found on the CDC website. Now therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado as follows. The city council hereby declares August 2025 as National Immunization Awareness Month in the city of Thornton, Colorado, and I ask for its immediate approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Salazar, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Well, as we all know, it's super important to keep up with your immunizations, and even as older people, it's time to think about getting your flu shots and other things. Thank you.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes, just more of the same on that. Having worked in a classroom for almost a year now, I went back to school first week and got sick, so just remember to get immunized if you can.
Any additional discussion? I'll just say thank you for bringing this forward. Please poll the council.
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 7E is a resolution declaring August 26, 2025, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Thornton, Colorado. Mayor Potem Bigelow, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce a resolution declaring August 26, 2025, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Thornton, Colorado. Whereas women in the United States have continuously worked to gain full rights and privileges, public or private, legal or institutional, as citizens of the United States. And whereas women in every state and every cultural and religious group work to secure women's rights to vote. And whereas, Congress has designated August 26, the date the 19th Amendment was certified as Women's Equality Day. And whereas recognizing Women's Equality Day as a day of celebration throughout the country emphasizes the importance of women's work for democracy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Thornton, Colorado as follows, that August 26, 2025, is hereby declared Women's Equality Day in the city of Thornton, Colorado, and I ask for its immediate approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. I'll open it for discussion. Mayor Potem Bigelow, you have the option to go first.
Thank you so much. I think it's very important and meaningful, especially right now, to talk about women's right to vote and to ensure that it continues. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? I'll just say that it's rare we get to do a resolution on the actual day of the event. So today is August 26. So thank you, Mayor Potem. Would you please poll the council?
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Item 8 is audience participation. This is a time for members of the community to speak on any item that is not on the agenda as a public hearing or going to be in a public hearing in the future. Pursuant to city council's rules of order and procedure, speaking time is limited to three minutes per person with a one-hour limit on this segment of the agenda. In-person speakers will be heard first, followed by remote speakers registered before the end of the in-person comment segment. Residents of the city, as indicated on the sign-up sheet, will be given preference in the order heard in each segment. The podium located on the dais of the council chambers must be used to offer public comment during the audience participation or public hearing sections of the meeting agenda. In the event of physical inability or preference, the public may offer to comment by microphone while seated in the audience seating area. But remember, at no time shall the public comment be made while moving around in the chambers. Ms. Rosenbaum, is there anyone who signed up to speak under audience participation?
Yes, Your Honor, we have nine individuals in person. No one has signed up online.
Thank you. So in just a moment, again, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak, and the segment of the agenda is limited to one hour. Please make sure that you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow and you hear a single beep, you'll need to wrap up your comments. And when it turns red and you hear multiple beeps, your time is up, and I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those in person, please come to the podium. When you are called, those in person, please come to the podium. Ms. Rosenbaum, would you please call the first person?
Mark Gormley, 13715 Ash Circle.
Anyone who has defended Benjamin Netanyahu, his voracious-
Zionist cabal, the United States- I'm going to start again. Anyone who has defended Benjamin Netanyahu, his voracious Zionist cabal, the United States' government support of the ongoing Israeli genocide of Palestinians, the destruction of their Gaza and West Bank homelands, and now the purposeful displacement and removal of Palestinians from their homeland, as well as the cold-blooded targeting of all journalists, is a disgusting, reprehensible, hate-filled, vile being. Their words and actions are not defense of Israel, nor are they supporting or defending Jews worldwide. Their actions are mass murder, mass slaughter, and genocide. Any one party to the propaganda being generated to obscure what is really happening is odious. The only remaining hope is that the progeny of those defenders come to know exactly who their parents and forebears are, so they themselves do not become facsimiles of them in the future. In the grander scheme of life, no time is wasted protecting our shared humanity and improving our world for our children and their children. A bit of time spent at the city level on higher-level matters can have a profound impact for everyone everywhere. Now a quote from Caitlin Johnstone, an Australian journalist. As with so much else, it's not about the individuals, it's about the system. The unjust system upon which the Zionist state is based has proved beyond a shadow of a doubt that it can never exist without nonstop violence and abuse. So that system needs to be dismantled and replaced with something radically different, just as was the case with Nazi Germany and apartheid South Africa. And just as was the case with Nazi Germany and apartheid South Africa, external pressures will probably need to play a role in forcing that change to take place. That's the only way forward. That's the only way there can be peace. And I add, Caitlin's external pressures start with we, the people, speaking out publicly and getting into the streets to push upward to force change. That is why I am here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Steve Mathias, 2076 East 102nd Avenue.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenbaum, can I get my media up, please?
I don't think we received anything.
I sent it Sunday night.
I don't think we received anything. We're checking right now.
You can email it directly to the council after the meeting.
I intended for the audience to see it, but that will work as well. All right. Mayor Coleman, members of the council, good evening. As a survivor of abuse, I've warned you for six months that residency restrictions increase risk. Tonight, the danger isn't offenders, it's you. This ordinance would require the city to publish and maintain a citywide live map of school bus stops where children gather isolated and unsupervised every morning and hand it to the sexually violent predators that this policy targets. Is that your definition of public safety, of protecting our children and our community? Bus stops aren't marked and they change with new school years, construction, and ridership. The draft isn't clear about whether predators cannot live adjacent to a stop or within 1,000 feet of a property adjacent to a stop, or how anyone would know where a designated stop is day to day. That creates two bad choices. If you don't publish an accurate school bus map, you can't make predators comply with boundaries they can't find. Without fair notice, the rule is unenforceable and likely unconstitutional. If you do publish that map, again, because it was up all weekend, you're creating a live, citywide inventory of morning gathering points for unsupervised children available to everyone in the world, including the predators you're trying to protect them from. Georgia tried school bus buffers in 2,000 sticks. A federal court limited enforcement to stops officially designated by school boards. Most boards refused, sheriffs pushed back, and the policy became unworkable. Over time, the city moved away from bus stop restrictions because the approach didn't improve safety. If proximity is truly a concern, there is a safer targeted fix: moving the bus stop. Don't solve it by distributing a school bus map to every offender. The school districts know better and so should you. Did you discuss this with them before proposing it? I raised this concern privately with members of council and police leadership. Given my warning wasn't heated, I needed to raise it publicly. This exact problem has been in front of you since February and it still hasn't been fixed. If you didn't see something this dangerous, what else have you missed if you go ahead with it later next month? Vote no to protect the city. Take time to get it right. Don't vote yes and give predators and kidnappers a shopping list of vulnerable children. It is your choice. I would also like to thank Board Member Amira Assad and the superintendent for listening to me and calling the city today to make sure that we protect the children when the city fails to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Sarah Waltski, 1460 East 128th Court.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman and members of the city council. First and foremost, my husband Dale and I would like to publicly extend our sincere appreciation to two of your staff members, Top Horns in Communications and Kira Stoller in Planning, for their responsiveness and professionalism in addressing the concerns we raised at the last meeting. Their engagement reflects a commendable commitment to public service. Second, we are completing a follow-up to our inquiry submitted yesterday. Given that they operate under the authority of this governing body, we respectfully request that the city council review the recording of the planning commission's meeting held on August 19. Specifically, we ask that you confirm the following observations. Inadequate preparation by the planning commission, dismissal behavior towards public comments expressing opposition, firsthand events, and proposed alternatives, and a lack of impartiality reflected in the voting that appear biased. If the city council does not intend to conduct a review, we kindly request guidance on the formal process for submitting our concerns. As we have expressed in previous meetings, we remain deeply concerned about the structure of public hearings. In particular, we do not understand why continuances are not used to evaluate public input before final decisions are made. This practice undermines transparency and discourages meaningful community engagement. Many residents are unfamiliar with the process, hesitant to speak openly, and often feel disheartened when their contributions are dismissed rather than acknowledged as sincere and valuable perspectives. While both the city council and the planning commission have cited low community attendance in the past, recent increases in public participation have not been met with appreciation or respect. We urge you to take these concerns seriously and implement measures that ensure public involvement is genuinely welcomed and protected. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We have been advised to not review that video related to the public hearing. However, your concerns related to conduct there can be addressed by staff and we, I know several of us have asked for that review to happen. Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Dale Waltski, 1460 East 128th Court.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman and city council members. Because I'm new at this city council stuff, I have a question. If a single ward has an issue that comes up for a vote that only affects that ward, do all the city council members of other wards get involved with the vote? Or do they leave it up to just the council members of just that one ward that has the issue? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm assuming if you send that question to the council members, they will be able to respond. Would you please call the next person?
Tom Lampeau, no address provided.
I'm Tom Lampeau. It's good to see everyone be back in front of Thornton. Hope all are doing well. I'm here again in objection to your land statement, which really isn't a land statement, an accusation against one group of people. Your statement is shallow, lacks perspective, and is stated to fit your political perspective. So as we look at this entire situation, we have a group of people moving from land they occupied to a land they didn't occupy. The invading groups saw an opportunity, had a need, and advanced toward the new land to claim it as their own. The advancing group had different beliefs, traditions, customs, languages, gods. No question, they were different than the group that was occupying the land. Those that occupied the land had three choices: cooperate with the invaders and assimilate to their way of life, accepting their language, customs, beliefs, everything they were all about. Or they could just move on, find a new place to reside, hunt, raise their families. I think you term it as forced removals. A third option is they can engage in wars, skirmishes, battles, and may the stronger, better-equipped group be victorious. Death would occur, families would be torn apart. All three of these options occurred and the new group prevailed. The occupied land was conquered. After conquering the land, the new group claimed it as their own, and to this day, they claim it for themselves. The conquering group's ways, traditions, beliefs, languages were all the new norm and expected to be learned and followed. That basically touches the main points of what happened. Again, you and I are not thinking of the same groups. It's not the Sioux or the Mongols, who are ancestors of some of the American Indian tribes, or the Europeans, or the once enslaved Blacks who went back to Africa and settled Liberia and enslaved the natives to that land. I'm speaking of the Japanese who did this to the Ainu people. But before the Japanese did it to the Ainu, the Ainu did it to the Nifk people. And the Nifk probably took the same actions to other people. I could go on for weeks telling you about groups that conquered lands and settled it for themselves. It happened constantly. You before me failed to realize this was the way of life on all lands. And because of this, I'm telling you, your statement is shallow, lacks perspective, and is politically motivated. We all conquered. We were all conquered. We were all slaves. We were all slave owners. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Louis Penaio, 4210 East 100th Avenue.
I'm here to ask why people have to come here and beg. To the authorities for you as elected officials to do your job. Cuando es parte de su trabajo o cuando solicitan un trabajo o prometen a la comunidad. When this is part of your job or you promise things to the community. Que van a llevar a cabo sus funciones o cumplir la ley. That you will follow the law. Según lo que se requiera. According to what is required. Y lo que obtenemos son excusas casi la mayor parte. And everything that I hear is excuses for the most part. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. I know staff continues to work on the concerns you bring forward. Would you please call the next person?
Jose Wakine, 4210 East 100th Avenue.
Yo tengo 52 años aquí en Estados Unidos. Trabajando. Y no sé, no tuve escuela ni allá, ni acá. Aquí vivo solo. Vivo allá con mi ex, pero he tiene muchos problemas con ella. Tengo nomás un cuartito y no tengo donde lavar mi ropa, ni donde lavar los trastes. Los lavo ahí en el baño. Tengo muchos problemas con ella. Y perdón, quiero que me ayuden. Es la segunda vez que vengo aquí. Por favor, que me ayuden. No tengo, estoy solo ahí aquí en Estados Unidos. Tengo 52 años aquí. Ah, ya dije, perdón. Y qué más. Estoy batallando mucho y pues no me acuerdo muy bien de las cosas, pero tengo muchas cosas que decir, pero se me olvidan. Y este...
He has issues. He lives by himself in a mobile home park trailer with his ex, and he needs help with having her evicted. He lives in a small room by himself and he's having to wash his dishes in his sink in his restroom, so he's just asking for assistance.
Espera un tantito. Dispensen.
I apologize.
Es que no me siento a gusto estar aquí en Estados Unidos muy solo. Me siento muy solo.
I feel too alone being here in the U.S.
Mi familia está en México. Y batalló mucho aquí por el inglés. Pues no puedo aprenderlo. He trabajado con pura gente latina. Y ahorita estoy viviendo con mi pobre y seguro. Necesito ayuda de ustedes, que me ayuden con mi ex porque me pone muchos problemas. Y no, me cambia la luz y todo. Batalló con ella para todo. Nomás me está mandando como si ella fuera mi patrona. Y la trae la sacamos entre los dos. Y pues tengo mucha historia, pero ahorita mi mente no está muy bien. Perdonen por eso.
He is apologizing.
No me acuerdo de otras cosas, perdón.
He just, in summary, he just feels lonely. He's here alone. He has no family. All his family is in Mexico and he's just asking for assistance on getting the person that lives with him out of the mobile home park so that he can have his property back. And that's it.
Por ahorita no me acuerdo, tengo muchas cosas, pero mi mente-
He can't remember what he wanted to say. Okay.
Gracias a ustedes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if we haven't already, can we please make sure that Community Connections gets in touch with him? Mayor Protem, did you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to ask staff, I want to make sure Community Connections is helping this gentleman and that code compliance is helping this woman. I'm concerned that this is the third time they've been here and I would love to ask for a report on what's being done to help them. Thank you.
We're happy to provide a summary.
Would you please call the next person?
Thomas Scoville, 13457 Williams.
Seven October, never forget it, never, ever. God bless Benjamin Netanyahu and the warriors he leads. God bless the people who are the victims of a vicious terrorist group called Hamas. I'm here to talk on several things, one of which is how- I'm here to talk on several things, one of which is how much I enjoy, is how much I enjoy the community meetings and ward meetings we have. I particularly enjoyed the one on July 10, except for one thing. Ward 4 council members were there wearing campaign logos that made the event indistinguishable from a campaign rally, with the city providing the venue, a captive audience, the food, and drink. Those things would have cost money if the campaign had to procure them on their own. That's unacceptable. One of my favorite adages is, "The law often allows more than honor permits. Don't forget it." On the other side, I'd like to get other remarks with respect to Kira Stoller. I'd also like to express my appreciation to the water department that came by last week and told me that I had a hose dripping. Remarkable service that they can detect that with their water meters, saved me some money. Also reminded me of the huge water problems that exist in other parts of the country, and how important water is to keeping us alive. If we don't have good water, we're all dead. Case in point is the cryptosporidium outbreak in Milwaukee in 1993. Now, Milwaukee is on Lake Michigan with all the fresh water one can imagine. Hard to believe that they would have a water problem. If they did, 400,000 people got sick, 69 died. It cost the city $500 million to fix the problem. Water Department and Sewer are the most important departments in the city. Keep up the good work. With respect to health and safety, I'm concerned, because I've heard reports that there's bedbugs and lice on rapid transit. I've heard reports that there's hypodermic needles in our parks, and I'm concerned that these problems may continue on into our public spaces and public buildings. I'd like you to look into that and see what the problem is. Problems of bedbugs and lice are usually associated with bad hygiene, can be solved with lots of clean water, lots of hot water and soap. The city's main job is to keep us safe and healthy, protect our property rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Annika Lanning, 1450 East 128th Court.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to take a moment to talk about the idea of the missing middle in housing. The missing middle describes the gap between two extremes in the housing market. On one end, we have way too many single-family homes, and on the other hand, we have way too many large apartment complexes. The missing middle is a notorious problem for everybody. So what's missing are the medium-scale options, like townhomes, duplexes, and garden homes that used to be common but have now become rare due to zoning changes and development patterns. The city already recognized this need when it carefully created the 2015 Station Area Master Plan for the area near Eastlake and 124th. On page 14, the plan describes the vision, a vibrant mix of land uses for people to comfortably work, live, sorry, live, work, and enjoy amenities in and around the station area. And on page 39, the plan is even more specific about the land at 128th Avenue, west of the railroad tracks. It calls for moderate-density housing, like townhouses or garden homes, with the possibility of neighborhood retailer office space. But now, instead of following that vision, there's a proposal to rezone the parcel at 15th...
And I have to stop you there, because that's going to be related to a public hearing, and so once you cross over into discussing a specific project, we can't hear testimony on it until the public hearing.
Can I talk about SMART?
You can talk about SMART, yes.
So I would say that we should adhere to the current zoning that they propose in that plan, which is medium density. So if one were to change the development to something else, such as planned development, which would allow any zoning, it would essentially toss the SMART Plan guidance and replace them with the developer's custom zoning. Thornton absolutely needs housing, but the real shortage here isn't more apartments or more single-family homes. It's the missing middle. At the apartment complex by where I live, Promenade at Hunter's Glen, I called them today, they have over nine units available. They're affordable apartments. They have a nice swimming pool. They have a nice clubhouse. A lot of my friends live there. It's affordable, nice apartments with plenty of vacancy at the moment. If we let land specifically earmarked for moderate-density housing be converted into dense apartment project, reassuring the very thing the city itself recognized we need most. I urge you, please don't let the missing middle problem deepen in Thornton. The SMART Plan got it right. This parcel should be middle-density housing, and we should...
Be careful not to talk about the specific parcel. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I tried to be generic and not say the M-word, but I do think we should adhere to that plan. The plan is showcased on the city website. I think it's a great plan. I like the whole diversity, you know, mix it up. It was very specific what it wanted. It wanted dense housing right next to the late rail station, and then envisioned, you know, some medium-density or some other things around there. I personally really support the plan. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
That was the last person who signed up to speak, Your Honor.
Is there any one in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't know you needed to sign up? I know you know you can come up to the podium. State your name.
Eric Montoya, candidate for Thornton City Council, Ward 2. Sorry, I didn't, I showed up late. Big surprise there. That's why I didn't sign up. But I reduced my speech to 53 minutes, so you're all in luck here. No, but honestly, I just want to thank you guys for all you do. I'm out there every day knocking on thousands of doors, talking to people in the community. For the most part, people are happy and proud to live in Thornton. Obviously, we have a lot of big issues we've heard tonight, and I just want to basically call to everybody, it's incumbent upon you guys to represent all of us, every community member, and whether you agree with them or not. You know, there's a lot of people who may disagree with you, and I can guarantee you, not one of you is liked by every single person in this community, but you still have to represent yourself to come to the table with good faith and goodwill to get things done. When we get, when we go for the low-hanging fruit and we get things done, it builds trust with each other, and then we can move on to the bigger issues that we heard here today. My heart hurts for some of the people that I've heard out here tonight asking for help, begging for help, and Mayor Protem, big little thank you for asking for follow-up. But, you know, the only way we're going to get things done in this community is if we stop looking at each other as enemies, and we start looking at each other like we're all neighbors, we're all in this together, we're all community. And that goes for all community members, too. We all have to stop looking at each other as enemies in this country. There, that, when we do that, we're bidding, we're doing the bidding for the rich and the powerful. They're the ones that are really by design making us fight with each other, and we just got to stop the polarization. We got to get the government working again for the people, and that's what I promise I will do when I get elected. I'm going to come up here, I know it's not some speech, but I, when I get elected, I will come to the table with good faith and goodwill, so that we can get the city moving forward. You're doing a great job, but we can do more, and that's the only way we're going to do it. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I couldn't tell if there were other hands that had raised or people that wanted to speak that didn't know they needed to sign up. All right, we will move on. Item 9 is public hearings, and at this time, I would ask anyone in the audience intending to give testimony, including citizens who have signed up to speak, to please stand so you can be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you hereby swear affirm that your testimony before this council will be true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you.
Item 9A is a public hearing concerning a resolution accepting and authorizing the City of Thornton to participate in the Denver Regional Council of Governments' Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Public hearing is now open at 7:59 PM. Cheryl Steinberg, grant and housing supervisor, will present this item. Please state your name, address, and whether or not you were sworn, and if not, you can respond to the clerk after she gives you the...
Cheryl Steinberg, 9471 Dorothy Boulevard, and I have been sworn. So we're here today at this public hearing to analyze accepting and authorizing participating in the Dr. Cog, the Denver Metro Regional Housing Needs Assessment, done, of course, by the Denver Regional Council of Government, or Dr. Cog. And we'll take a look at the prevailing laws involved here, which is the new one, 24-174. We're going to take a look at our city's housing needs assessment that we already have. Participation, what does it mean to be participating in our regional housing needs assessment? We're going to take a look at the regional housing needs assessments highlights, and then present our staff recommendation. So, the Sustainable Affordable Housing Assistance Law. This is the prevailing legislation on housing needs assessment, passed last year in May. It's new. It does require local governments conduct a housing needs assessment that conforms to DOLA's methodologies that they have set forth, and it needs to be completed and approved by DOLA by December 31 of 2026. Now, in that law, local governments can be exempted from this requirement if they participate in a regional housing needs assessment that complies with DOLA's methodologies as well. So taking a look at Thornton's housing needs assessment, and many of you will remember on council here that it was approved last December. We submitted it to DOLA for review. It was received, and then their comment came back in April, saying it was conditionally approved, but additional information was needed, and this would need to be done and approved by, and resubmitted by the end of December 2026. And just a side note, we didn't have those methodologies yet. They hadn't released them by the time it was passed by council. So staff will make sure to get that update completed, get it confirmed by DOLA, and submitted on time. And the important thing here is that the city's housing needs assessment will be the primary housing needs assessment used in planning, strategic planning, and so forth. So how do we participate with Dr. Cog's regional housing needs assessment? Well, basically, it's what we're doing now. This is a big part of it. City council reviews the regional housing needs assessment at a public meeting, submits all comments to Dr. Cog to include in their plan, and this includes both council comments and public hearing comments. So why are we considering this, to begin with? The regional housing needs assessment participation? Well, it does provide a regional perspective on the Denver metro area's housing needs, provides a network of cross-governmental collaboration, develops a shared analysis for inter-jurisdictional issues, we all, or many of us share, and it provides a source of regional data that will help us implement our housing action plan, which is also a requirement of Senate Bill 24-174. And a nice thing is it is quicker compliance with Colorado's Sustainable Affordable Housing Act. What participation does not do? It does not supersede the city's housing needs assessment. It, neither the current one or any future one. It does not require formal participation, funding, or agreements. It does not interfere with the city's future housing needs assessment compliance with DOLA. So we get three choices here. We can use our own, use the regional one, or do both. So let's take a look at the regional housing needs assessment. For housing, we think regionally. We think of our housing in relation to our jobs, how affordable they are, the schools that are in proximity, amenities in proximity, childcare availability, neighborhoods, the commute, safety, healthcare, location of family, whether that could be good or bad, that's up to you. And then our housing and planning and preparation should consider these and other regional perspectives. Now, Dr. Cog's area, planning area, was a 10-county area. Boulder and Weld at the top, Douglas County and Jeffco at the bottom, and we were considered north-central area. So, in the grand summary in total of the needs that they identified are pretty staggering, really, to address current and future needs across the income spectrum, so all incomes. The Denver region needs to build a half a million units by 2050, 25 years from now. And by 2032, just try to stay on pace with this development, we need 223 additional units, and that was starting back in '23 up to 2032. And an important thing I wanted to note here is, for every 10 homes that we need to build in Thornton and the region, six need to be affordable. So six out of 10 in order for us to meet the need. And what does affordable mean? It means that a person who makes less than 50% of the area median income can afford it. They're not going to be house-burdened or cost-burdened with housing, which I'll get into in a moment. So to give you some numbers, one person, a senior living alone, would be making less than $45,650 and be considered, you know, less than 50% area median income. A family of four, the total household income would be $65,200 or less. Now, Dr. Cog provided individual data on the different communities in their region of study, and Thornton's here shows in the next 10 years, they predict we need 6,440 units. And that big dark blue section, that's the six out of 10. That's the 61% of the housing need is for folks and households making less than 50% of the area median income. Now, I thought it'd be good to compare with what we came up with, what we calculated in research for our local Thornton housing needs, and we're almost double what the regional predicts and calculated. We show with our adjustments, in the same time period, we need $11,500 to $12,000. And this is irrespective of income, but it is almost twice the amount of the regional. And mainly, this is because we used, we did a deeper dive on Zillow, we use our own projections for population, our own data on housing size decreasing and so forth. So let's take a look at rental housing burdens. Now, cost burden, as I alluded to earlier, if your income, you have to spend your total household income, over 30% of it has to go to housing. So if you own a home, that's mortgage taxes, insurance, that's your utilities, that's housing-related costs. If it's more than 30% of your income, you are house-cost burdened. And looking at this chart, it shows that from 2000 to 2022, the gold is that 30% or more is being spent on your housing. Now, look, it's grown, obviously, from this chart, but what's interesting is in the red, it grew quite a bit, and this is even worse. It's 50% that household's income is being spent on housing. They are severely housing-burdened. They have less than 50% of their household income to spend on everything else they need. So in just a quick comparison here on our rental housing burden compared to our housing needs assessment versus the regional housing needs assessment, is we had a small, higher calculation of 3.8% more. So we were pretty close with each other. Now, the key findings of the regional housing needs assessment, they produced a summary, and the region has not produced enough housing to keep pace with population growth and job growth. Families, households making below 50% of the area median income represent the greatest need for additional housing. That's six out of 10. Aging population and smaller household trends will require more diverse housing types. We're going to have to get creative. Housing types and affordability are unevenly distributed across the region. And Dr. Cog sees its role here as it can convene and facilitate diverse stakeholders, provide data collection and analysis, technical assistance, education, policy alignments, and funding coordination. I really like that one. And this is all free to the city. So let's just go back as to why we were considering this, and it provides a regional perspective, provides that network of cross-governmental collaboration, shared analysis for inter-jurisdictional issues, utilize regional data sources, and... collaboration, shared analysis for inter-jurisdictional issues, utilize regional data sources, and it's quicker compliance with the law. We recommend, staff recommends, that we participate in the Dr. Cog's Denver Metro Regional Housing Needs Assessment by accepting the document. Our alternative, which is fine, is not to accept Dr. Cog's Denver Metro Regional Housing Needs Assessment and only utilize the city's housing needs assessment. But we do recommend, we do both. And I'm done.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council at this time? All right.
I've got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah. So by using both housing needs assessments, how would the city of Thornton benefit from adopting the Regional Housing Needs Assessment from Dr. Cog alongside ours, specifically when they come to different conclusions? You mentioned the severity of the housing needs, and Thornton's study is almost double that of Dr. Cog. What are some other ways or ways that we can use both studies to advise the council and staff on how to produce better policy that could produce more housing?
And the cities would supersede the regional, and that is completely acceptable under the law and with Dr. Cog. We would also be looking at, they are not as specific and detailed. Their document is 40-some pages long. Ours is much longer than that because we have a lot of detail and investigation in it. So it is going to serve as that overview. I think we'll be using it to assist with obtaining funding and joint direction with other communities so that we can work together to try to accomplish these goals because we have the same interests. And I think that kind of communication, that extra communication, that extra data, extra information, I think will assist us in the long run, especially since we do need a Housing Action Plan, which is basically written in our Housing Needs Assessment. But DOLA will come up with their methodologies for it and submit it to us so we can produce it the way they'd like to see it. So I think it provides uniformity. I think all those considerations I mentioned also are a good reason to participate. And it's really not adopting it, but actually accepting it. That's how we had to write it in the resolution because we don't adopt their plan. We just agree to accept the information and to work together where we can.
Any other questions? You'll have an opportunity to ask more in just a moment. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing for public comment. Ms. Rosenbaum, do we have anyone signed up to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed resolution?
Yes, Your Honor, we do not have anyone signed up in person. We have one person signed up online.
All right, so in just a moment, each speaker online will be given up to three minutes to speak. Please make sure that you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow and you hear a single beep, you'll need to wrap up your comments. And when it turns red, you'll hear multiple beeps and your time is up. And I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those on the webinar registration that wish to speak will be allowed to unmute and speak when the clerk calls your name. Please state your name, address, and whether or not you were sworn for the record. And if you were not, then we will get you sworn in by the clerk. Ms. Rosenbaum, would you please call the first person?
Trevor Worth, 2546 East 125th Place. And I do not see him online, so if they can raise their hand, we can unmute them. That was the last person, Your Honor.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak but didn't know you needed to sign up? You can come to the podium now. All right, okay. We will go ahead and close the public comments. Is there any additional question from council for staff? All right, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed at 8:15 PM. And Councilmember Martinez, would you please introduce item 9A?
Yes, I'd like to introduce a resolution accepting and authorizing the city of Thornton to participate in the Denver Regional Council of Governments Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and I move for its approval.
Second. Thank you. Approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Martinez, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Cheryl and her team for making contributions for such valuable work for the city. I think it provides a foundation for us to be better informed in our policy decision. And quite honestly, it's very concerning to see the results of both housing needs assessments, the city's own and the regional one made by Dr. Cog, both of them staying at minimum. We have over 6,000 units shortage of housing, and even more so when the city of Thornton dives in deeper, we find that one in five of our neighbors are extremely cost burdened, spending over 50% of their income on housing. And these people are valuable members of our community. They are our social workers, our teachers. They can be our public workers, retail workers, food service workers. The list goes on and on and on. And these peoples, they are children, they go to our schools, they're our friends, they're our family, and they have a right to live in our community. And it is truly a sad state of affairs to acknowledge that they have to spend over 50% of their income on housing and struggle to survive and become and be valuable members of our community, largely due to the inadequate policies that local governments, including the city of Thornton, have had over the years. This housing need shortage is caused in large part by the actions of our past and the land use policies that we've set forward. And I think this should be a wake-up call to everybody who participates in local government at all levels, that the housing shortage that we have in these cost burden residents should awaken us to our priorities. I don't think it's fair that our own policies that we've set forth in the past have created this unjust burden on our neighbors and our families and our friends. And I think it is a responsibility of this council and all of our peers throughout the region to look at these housing needs studies, to be better informed when we come up with land use policy, and that we do our very best and prioritize housing. We've already heard it once tonight during public comment about the missing middle, and we hear it on a weekly basis. So I welcome this study, and I'm glad that we have such a competent and motivated staff working behind this and to help us identify where we need to prioritize our policy. So thank you, and I am glad to support this.
Councilmember Sangren.
Thank you. I'll just say thank you to the city staff. This has been an ongoing project. I was on the Dr. Cog Board for six years, and this started while I was on the board several years ago, conversation. I disagree with my colleague on some of the reasons for the shortage of missing middle. I think our biggest challenge over the years is construction defects, which is actually a state legislative problem. So land use, as we know, we don't all have the same needs and can't meet the same things that Denver and Boulder have. And so land use does need to remain within the city and for home rule. We cannot ever abide by or meet the criteria that the governor has set forth for less parking, and we'll never meet that. So right now, we're seeing what those limitations will look like if we try to apply for grants. We won't be able to receive those grants. And so while I agree with my colleague that there is definitely a shortage of housing, especially affordable and attainable housing, I don't believe that it's all on the city in land use and land zoning. So I would love to see just as much of an effort being pushed at the state capitol to remove construction defects, to allow for condos to be built again in a way that allows anyone in the community, including seniors, first-time homebuyers, to buy that smaller first-time owner, whatever it is that they're looking for. You have seniors that used to move out of the three-story houses and move into one-story houses. Those are no longer available. And so that is all a part of construction defects and the problem around that. So year after year, we hear there's going to be improvements. There hasn't been a single improvement since I've been on this council that has actually allowed for any condos to be built anywhere in the city. I don't see that changing anytime soon. So I would urge anyone that has a concern about this to reach out to their state legislator and tell them to stop taking money from the trial lawyers and actually do something. So I appreciate this coming forward. I think the more information we have on any shortage of housing and housing gaps is helpful to the city, especially as we do look at where we're going to develop. We know that our roads can't hold up, you know, a huge amount of growth in certain areas. And so as we develop those areas, I think this information will just help us to do it in a meaningful and sustainable way. So thank you.
Any additional discussion? I'll just echo both of my colleagues. I think the information that staff has done to put this together is incredible. It provides us another tool for our toolbox. I think there's work to do at the city level. I think there's work to do at the state level, and we have to start somewhere. So would you please pull the council?
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 10 is council comments and communications. So I will start tonight with Ward 4. Mayor Protan Viglo.
Thank you so much. I wanted to say thank you to everyone who came and spoke this evening. I appreciate you coming in with your comments. I will remind you, we're here as your elected officials to try and make our city the best place it can be. I love it when people come in with ideas and solutions for issues in our city because all of us are working hard to make this a better place to live, work, and play moving forward. I'm a little dismayed that we have so many residents that haven't, that don't feel they've been provided enough communication or guidance regarding the planning commission or public hearing process. It is complex and confusing, and I hope that we can change our level of communication. And I know that we plan to do so in order to better communicate with our residents on that process, how that process works, and when you're able to be able to give better feedback. One of the things that we've been working on last year and this year is to update our charter. There's a lot of items in our charter that needed updating. We had a ballot initiative on the ballot to vote for you to vote on last year. We're going to have several of those on the ballot again this year. But one of the things I would do is urge each and every one of you to read our city charter and send us emails with items you think need to be updated because that's something that we take seriously, and I believe that it does need to be updated more than it has been. So thank you.
Councilmember Russell.
Good evening, everyone. I was honored to attend the Thornton Business Appreciation, Awards, and Reception. I was a little disappointed in the fact that I missed the actual award presentation because of a, I don't know, something was wrong with my calendar there. But I was able to make it to the reception in time and celebrate with some of the business owners. It was really great to connect with all of them, talk about some of their needs and future ambitions, reconnected me with some residents that are business owners that I hadn't seen in a long time. So definitely congratulations to this year's winners and nominees. Your innovation, resilience, and commitment to our community are outstanding. A big thank you to our economic development team and the Thornton Area Chamber for organizing another great event for all you do year-round to support our local businesses. Additionally, just a quick reminder, ongoing, I've had some communication from residents that were unaware, but Market Carpenter Recreation Center is closed through September 1st for our annual maintenance. It will reopen on September 2nd. So if it's you or neighbors or anybody, that's a convenient reminder just to know that this is part of the city's maintenance annually and that in a week or so, or September 2nd, it will be reopened. So thank you for your patience while our staff completes the improvements to the facility to keep it in great shape for everybody. Additionally, Labor Day is coming up this upcoming weekend. It's somewhat the end of summer, so I hope that everybody did enjoy their summer, but do please be responsible when you celebrate, do barbecues and things because, as many of you know, some of the goals of our police department is traffic enforcement. So have fun, but have fun responsibly, and thank you.
Councilmember Acunto.
I think, Mayor, I did have two responses to some of the community members that came up here in public comment, but since they left, I'm just going to withhold that for now, and I'll defer to my word bait, Tony. Thank you.
Councilmember Unrain.
Thank you, Mayor. Here are some of the activities and events I attended over the past week. Thursday, August 21st, in council chambers, the North Metro Police Academy held a graduation ceremony. Mayor Coleman swore in seven new officers to the Thornton Police Department. These new officers were in class number one, completed the post-certification training at our own Thornton Police Training Academy. Congratulations to all our new officers and the training staff. Later that evening, the Thornton Economic Development Department held its, held this year's business awards and appreciation party at the newly opened Chicken and Pickle. Great food, lots of pickleball, and fun games were enjoyed by all that attended. Five Thornton businesses, private and corporate, were awarded for their accomplishments during the past year. Congratulations and best wishes for continued success in the future. And last Saturday, the Parks and Recreation Department hit another home run with the 2025 Barrel and Beer Festival. A great decision to relocate this year's event at the Trail Winds Recreation Center Open Fields. A wonderful selection of beverages, music, food, and comfortable weather altogether made this a perfect socializing and fun event. Thank you to the volunteers, staff, beverage companies for a safe and entertaining evening. Sunday, the Thornton Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association hosted the 2025 Cops and Community Golf Scramble. It was a very pleasant day at the Thornton Creek Golf Course. The goal is to raise funds to support the city of Thornton's Police Department, officers, and family members, which included a youth scholarship. This is a complete community effort for success. Thank you, golfers, volunteers, sponsors, and staff for a very fun day. Yesterday, we welcomed Little Sunshine's Playhouse to Thornton with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. After the school day was completed, the entire staff gave us a friendly and welcome facility tour. This brand-new facility is located at 128th Avenue and Quebec Street in Ward 3, which opened in July. Little Sunshine Playhouse provides educational childcare to infants and child up to ages six, six weeks through pre-kindergarten by engaging in play-based learning programs. I look forward to Little House Sunshine's Playhouse, Little Sunshine Playhouse's successful future, and thank you for their hospitality. A couple of notes that are coming up. School has started again this year. Seems like it gets earlier every year. I mention this as a reminder while driving to watch out for the school buses and pedestrian traffic. When dropping off and picking up your kids, keep your heads swivel, obey all the traffic signals, and respect the neighborhoods that you go through. And today, I received an invitation today for the ice cream with the Thornton Police Department. This will happen on Thursday, September 11th, 5:00 PM at the Dairy Queen located at 3894 East 120th Avenue. I'll be there, so I look forward to seeing everybody. And finally, be safe and enjoy the Labor Day weekend. Thank you.
Councilmember Sangren.
Thank you. I'll just go through some of those events quickly since you've heard about most of them. We also last Tuesday met with all five of our county commissioners. I think that's, I know that that's the first time since I've been on council that we've actually had the opportunity to do that. And so that discussion was around resources between the county and the city and how we work together to deal with a variety of things, but particularly for this conversation discussing homelessness and unhoused individuals in our communities. And so I know there will be more conversations coming. Looking forward to hearing how this initial conversation, some of the ideas that came out of it, if we're able to implement any of them quickly or what that timeline might look like. As you heard, last Thursday, we had the business awards event. I will say I did like the new format much better. It allowed for a lot more networking and just being able to talk to those business owners that were in the room. So congratulations to this year's winners. We also had, as you heard, the Third Annual Beer and Barrel Festival, also a new location. I think that was a good move by staff. I think the environment up there is definitely more fitting for that event, and it just continues to grow, and I know it'll grow more next year. So thank you to the staff that put that together and for those distillers and brewers and everyone else that was there participating. Sunday, again, the Thornton alumni, Thornton Police Alumni had their golf tournament. It's always great to see how that event grows. There's new faces in that group. If you haven't had a chance to try out or participate in the alumni, citizens alumni for Police Department, I think it's something very unique and eye-opening experience, something that definitely everyone should try to get into their mix of things to do in the city. I will go ahead. I will go ahead and move on to my thank you for different staff departments, as I've been doing the last few meetings. So I'll start with the City Attorney's Office. I just want to take a moment to thank our City Attorney's Office for everything you do to support council and the community. Over the years, you've helped guide us through some of our most important decisions for major projects like the recent water project approval to some of the more contentious items that require not just legal clarity but steady and thoughtful direction. What I have especially appreciated is your ability to balance both the immediate, answering our questions on the fly during meetings, and the long-term providing guidance that helps us set us up for success well into the future. Your work may not always be visible to the public, but it is absolutely essential to the way we govern. So thank you for always being a reliable partner and resource for us. And the Fire Department. I want to take a moment to thank the Fire Department for the incredible work you do every single day. I have only been able to do one ride-along in the years. COVID kind of took out some of those more personal opportunities, but I am setting up another one. So I've toured our fire stations over the years, and every time I walk through those doors, I'm struck by the dedication, the teamwork, and the deep pride you carry, you carry in serving our community. The ride-along gave me just a glimpse of the challenges you face, and it left me with so much respect for the way you step into those situations with courage and professionalism. I know I need to get one more count, on the calendar before the end of this year, and I will make sure and do that. What stands out most to me is how quickly you respond when our community needs you and how you've become a model for other first responders and fire agencies across the region. You don't just meet the standard, you set it, and you do it while providing exceptional services that makes our residents feel safe, cared for, and proud of the department that serves them. And of course, I can't leave out the fact that you have some of the coolest mascots I've ever seen, and you are some of the best chefs. So thank you. And then Economic Development and the Business Alliance Center. Thank you for the incredible work that you do to strengthen our community. From my perspective, it's been exciting to see new businesses open their doors, especially the cool new restaurants with unique indoor and outdoor spaces like Billy Birch and Chicken and Pickle. They are giving residents new places to gather and connect, and that energy doesn't just happen without your hard work and vision. I also appreciate the way you've built strong partnerships with our small business community through the challenges of COVID. You were right there helping businesses navigate uncertainty, making sure they felt supported and not alone. And even today, you continue to ensure our business community feels heard and has a voice in how we grow. Your efforts don't just bring in new opportunities, they make Thornton a more vibrant, connected, and resilient city. So thank you for your passion, creativity, and commitment to making sure our businesses and residents thrive together. Moving on to my every single council meeting protest against the land acknowledgement where I share random facts because I think that our acknowledgement is also a random acknowledgement with nothing based behind it. So today, August 26th, even though it seemed like peach season just started, today is actually National Cherry Popsicle Day. Popsicle lovers across the United States enjoy celebrating National Cherry Popsicle Day. An 11-year-old Frank Epperson inspired the creation when he invented the original popsicle back in 1905. After mixing up a powdered soda, he left the beverage overnight with a stirring stick in it. Temperatures dropped unusually low that night, and the next morning, Epperson found the liquid frozen on a stick. He dubbed the creation the Epsicle. It wasn't until years later, in 1922, during a fireman's ball, that he introduced the frosty treat. With the popsicle's huge success, Epperson proceeded to make and sell his frozen sweetness at an amusement park in Alameda, California. And by 1924, Epperson applied for a patent by that name. Sometime later, he changed the name to Popsicle. And if you were wondering, next week is actually Blueberry Popsicle Day, next Tuesday. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Ayala?
Thank you. I just want to take some time tonight to kind of just bring attention to an issue that's been coming across my mind through conversations over the last few weeks, specifically now with campaigns heightening. The conversations have been happening throughout Thornton, and I've heard that many neighbors, one of their biggest concerns right now in our community is homelessness. Folks are deeply concerned not only about what's being done to support those experiencing homelessness, but also about the safety in our neighborhoods and what that looks like for them. Tonight, I want to take some time to address this concern and share some of the ways we're working towards solutions here in Thornton, and also talk about the systemic change needed to truly move the needle so that fewer people end up living on the streets. In Thornton, homelessness has not always been visible as it is today, and I can say that because I've lived here for over 35 years. And when I was a kid, seeing somebody who was homeless in Thornton was very rare. But over the past few decades, changes in our state and in our country have made this crisis far more prevalent across Colorado. Thornton is the largest city in Adams County, and with that comes a responsibility to lead. We can and must step up to both support county programs and explore services we may be able to offer here locally in our city. Just last week, just as Councilmember Sangren mentioned, our full city council, our full city council met with, in a planning session with the full Adams County Board of Commissioners. This was an important step. We reviewed the programs currently available for people in Thornton who may be unhoused. We talked a little bit about how many people have utilized the services available in the county. We've talked about, we had some productive conversations about how to coordinate better, and I believe this is just the first step in the beginning of many steps to get to a place where we're having much better discussions, and these discussions expand or will expand and will include other cities, hopefully in our region, so that together we can create stronger and a more connected solutions throughout Adams County. I also want to be clear that homelessness is a huge and complicated issue, and this is something that I think we don't always consider, is just how complicated, complicated of an issue homelessness is. It can't be solved overnight, but we do know that programs which provide both immediate relief and long-term support can and do make a difference. At the heart of these solutions is affordable housing because keeping families, seniors, and workers in stable housing prevents them from falling into homelessness in the first place. Thornton needs to prioritize housing that our residents can truly afford. And so the people, and that way, people are not priced out of the community that they call home. And I could speak to this a little bit because I have a 21-year-old, and he still lives with me, and I don't see a time in the near future where he'll be able to afford to live in an apartment like I was able to at his age in Thornton. So we have to take some, consider, consider some different options. One of them is Housing First models. Those provide stable housing as a foundation to end homelessness, and you pair that with wraparound services like case management, mental health, and job support, emergency shelters, and transitional housing so that families and individuals, individuals are safe and have options to staying off the street. This is a big problem in Adams County because we do not have a shelter. And so if folks are gonna go to a shelter, more than likely, they're gonna be going to Denver and then traveling, you know, back and forth, or sometimes folks come to Thornton for one reason or another. And so shelters in the Adams County area just don't exist at this point. Workforce development and job training programs, these create pathways to a stable employment because we all know that in order to have housing, you have to have stable employment. Mental health and addiction treatment services, many people that are experiencing homelessness are facing these challenges, and we need to look into serving folks in that area as well. This is one that I think is really interesting because I've had many conversations with folks about the partnerships we have with nonprofits and faith-based groups in Adams County. As any of you know that have lived in Adams County for a while, we're not a community that's full of rich people. And so I kind of partner this also with mutual aid. Like, how do we get together as community and support people that are experiencing homelessness without continuously pointing the finger and thinking that this group or that group, you know, the county, the city, all these different entities are supposed to help? But how do we truly get together and help folks with different entities like nonprofits, faith-based groups, and mutual aid groups that want to support folks and give them what they might need from food distribution to overnight shelter? And then regional collaboration, this is the conversation I was talking about earlier. We have to start having more robust conversations with our county commissioners around the services they're providing and what we're doing here in the City of Thornton. And the real big outcome for me in that conversation was just how much I felt that we're working in two different silos when we should be working together and sharing more information across, across the table. We should be giving more information to the county. They should be telling us what they're working on. And so my hope is through that conversation we had last week, we'll continue these conversations into the future and involve other cities. I've spoken to council members and the mayor of Commerce City and, and other council members, and, and they're feeling the same way. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get to that point. And so really, this was just a converse, just a, a little bit of what I wanted to say tonight, you know, is just to start leading by example, start with affordable housing, couple that with systemic supports that can really get folks off the streets and address some of these issues while improving the safety in our neighborhoods. Because I know, I know that when folks talk to voters, they're really concerned about their personal safety, and that's truly important. And I think that like, as politicians and candidates, we appreciate that. But when you look at these pictures on a bigger scale, you have to understand that the only way we can solve these problems is through a huge umbrella of supports for people to get them in a better place and get them off the streets into housing and into, you know, jobs so they can truly be self-sustaining individuals. So just wanted to kind of bring this up tonight and let folks know kind of what's, what's going on in that because I know it's a, a huge issue for people in our neighborhoods, and we truly are working on this, and it's something that's been kind of a, a passion project of mine for sure. So, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. I would like to thank Stephen Mathias for speaking this evening. And lately, I've been quite busy with city council work focused on important community issues like getting the weeds taken care of and the speed bumps returned on Lily and all while advocating for our residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
There is a lot going on in Thornton. There is so much going on, and I'm grateful that my colleagues out here are going to the events that I really wish I could make it to, but, you know, I just, I can't because there's only so much time. But I do, I think that we cover, we do a pretty good job at covering all the things. So I just want to commend all my colleagues for being so invested and dedicated to the citizens of Thornton. I'll give you all a little bit of update of what I did over the last couple of weeks to serve the City of Thornton, starting with the Ward 1 meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. It was a very successful meeting. We had lots of great questions. It was very well-attended. Ward 1, as, as you might know, is very involved in their community, and we had a good turnout, engaged crowd. We heard from staff about emergency preparedness and the community emergency response team, which is an excellent program. If you don't know about it, I suggest going on the website and, and learning more, but it's a great way for residents to become leaders in their community when it comes to emergencies and disasters. We also heard from the Police Department, and they provided some relevant and recent statistics in Ward 1. We also heard about the latest programming and services offered from the Homeless Outreach Team. And I do would like to second many of the comments that Councilmember Ayala just made, and the Homeless Outreach Team is, is also working hard on many of those issues. We heard a presentation from Code Enforcement to give us some information about their efforts. And original Thornton, an economic development team, provided us an update on some of the new businesses opening in Ward 1, including Malibu Jacks. There's a new full-service restaurant coming to the old Chicago location, and the progress being made at the Thornton Shopping Center. I also had a chance, or I also did attend the AdCog Regional Sub, Subregional Forum, which is an incredibly important meeting that gives Thornton an opportunity to collaborate with its neighbors in an effort to submit competitive transportation projects to the regional transportation plan, also known as RTP, which is an ongoing process that is one of several different ways Dr. Cog determines which projects to allocate federal transportation funding. So there's an upcoming call for projects in the next iteration of RTP, and Thornton's staff is working hard to put together proposals for critical infrastructure projects that will benefit everybody who live and work in Thornton. Since Ad, since the AdCog Forum this time around can only submit 15 projects to compete against all the other projects in the Denver metro area, Thornton will be leading the way in advocacy to make sure those projects that impact Thornton residents and businesses will have the best chance to be funded with our federal transportation dollars. It's a very important meeting. I'm also been grateful to attend the Municipal Leadership Academy, Class of 2025. We had our Good Governance Training in Trinidad. Some highlights from there, we heard from the Betcher Foundation about some of their latest work in leadership development, specifically in rural communities. And the presentation focused on Betcher Foundation's Leadership Development Initiatives in Colorado. And we also got to hear a presentation from SIRSIA regarding the best practices related to quasi-judicial hearings and the effective uses of rules of order. So this is just the beginning of a series of leadership training that is sponsored by the Metro Mayor's Caucus and Civic Results, which is chaired by our own former mayor, Heidi Williams. So very excited to see what the rest of the program offers. I also attended the Dr. Cog Board of Directors meeting. The meeting covered several organizational updates, including board collaboration surveys, committee reports. There's a notable staff change. I want to congratulate Jacob Rieger for being selected as Dr. Cog's new Director of Transportation. Jacob is a dedicated, longtime transportation expert who's been serving Dr. Cog for decades, and he's gonna make a great new leader for the Transportation Department. And of course, I already mentioned the RTP program, which we will hear more updates down the line. I also was able to attend the Business Awards Appreciation. Congratulations to the winners. They were all fantastic winners. I'll just mention them briefly. We had the People's Choice Award going to IWE, Mexican Snacks, Community Spirit Award to Allegro Coffee Company, Small Business of the Year, went to Lisa's Place, which I went to the day after, and I will say delicious breakfast. If you don't, haven't been there, check it out. It's over there on 104th and Washington. Retailer of the Year, Costco, I go there all the time. Nothing else need to be said about that. Employer of the Year, Ace Thermal Systems. So all these businesses have made significant contributions to our community, and I'm, I'm glad that our, our, our economic development staff was able to recognize those contributions. And thanks to all the, all the people that attended and are sponsored by Chicken and Pickle as well. I was also able to attend, represent Thornton at the NLC Hispanic Elected Officials Board Meeting, which is a great way to elevate our, our position as in Thornton and throughout the whole community of municipal leaders throughout the country. And last but not least, on Sunday, I was happy to attend Dia de Pesca, which will also translates to Fishing Day. It was such a great event. Thanks to all the staff that was, were there. Thank you to City Manager Tanzi Hayward for also being there and participating. It was a collaboration between the City of Thornton, the Colorado Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Colorado Wildlife Foundation, Denver Parks and Recreation. So lots of collaboration going on there. And I took my kids there for their first time fishing. We did not catch a fish. I'm originally from New Mexico. We don't have any water there, so I'm a terrible angler. But I did get to meet a young man who caught several fish and later found out that he was a, a real angler who consistently wins fishing tournaments. So congratulations to that young man. And I particularly want to thank Thornton's Superintendent of Recreation, Chris Steinki, for his attention to detail, enthusiasm, and welcoming attitude. It was contagious and leaked out to all of the other vendors, and I could tell that everybody was having a good time, in large part to all of the work that Chris put together and, and the way, it was just fantastic that he was there being the, the, the face of Thornton in that collaborative event. So thank you, Chris. I can't wait to see this event grow, and hopefully next year, they, we will be able to put stock the pond with fish for people like me who have no idea what we're doing. So thank you all for attending, and all those who commented. Your voices are heard, and we take your comments seriously. So please continue to come and always feel free to reach out to me or my colleagues if you have questions about the city.
Thank you. Oh, good evening. Just a few comments from me tonight. I think my colleagues have done a great job of explaining all of the incredible things going on across the city, so I'll just give a few highlights. But first, the city is actively recruiting for several regular positions. We have a building inspector, civil engineering technicians, firefighter, recruiter, and senior surveyor. You can visit our website at www.thortenceo.gov for additional information regarding all of our open positions, or you can sign up for a job alert. of our open positions, or you can sign up for our Job Alert. You can also follow us on Facebook and LinkedIn. We are also currently advertising for the Environmental Sustainability Task Force, and the deadline to apply is August 28th at 5:00 p.m. And the local licensing authority for Ward 4, the deadline to apply there is September 18th at 5:00 p.m. Since mid-August, Thornton has seen a lot of exciting developments and community engagement. We have had several ribbon cuttings across multiple businesses, and I was able to make it to five over the last two weeks. We welcomed new ownership at the Candlewood Suites. This is a hotel that's been part of our community for more than 10 years, and they have done a refresh. Mom's House Academy opened its second Thornton location with additional childcare options. HCA Health One, which we all know is North Suburban Hospital, unveiled its new patient tower. This is a huge milestone for the hospital, and it's pretty personal for me. My daughter was actually born there just over 17 years ago. DAR Chocolate expanded to include products from other local makers, and their chocolate is fantastic if you have not tried it yet. And Little Sunshine's Playhouse of Thornton opened their doors, giving families even more childcare choices. I also had the opportunity to meet with Congressman Evans and the U.S. Chamber of Commerce over lunch to strengthen partnerships that benefit our community and our local businesses. We talked about taxes and some of the changes coming for small businesses on the federal front. I also participated in a panel on healthcare partnerships to explore ways of collaboration and improving services for our residents. I was so excited to be able to share the partnership that we have between our first responders and our local hospital, and it's something that the rest of the region is looking at as a model. On the public safety front, we sworn seven new officers to the Thornton Police Department, and we had the 2025 Cops and Community Gulf Scramble, bringing residents and officers together in support of scholarships for our police family members. So we're extremely lucky, not only to have an amazing police department, but a community that steps up to support them often. At the Mile High Flood District meeting, we moved forward with the Woodland Drainage Master Plan Study, and this is a key step in protecting our neighborhoods from flooding. And finally, we celebrated our local economy and community spirit with the 2025 Business Awards at Chicken and Pickle, where we honored the outstanding Thornton businesses. And we had the Third Annual Barrel and Beer Festival, which brought our neighbors together to enjoy and celebrate and support local vendors. All of these events and milestones highlight the strength, the engagement, and the resilience of our community, and I'm extremely proud to see Thornton thriving in so many ways. And thanks again to everyone who came out for public comments. With that, we're going to move on to Item 11, which is Staff Reports. Item 11A is the monthly financial report for June of 2025. I'll turn this over to Kim Newhart, Finance Director, and Erica Senna, Budget and Operations Director, to present this item.
Good evening, Council. Kim Newhart, Finance Director. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give you an update on the city's second quarter financial results. You will also find, that's not turning, you'll also find the full packet, or the full financial report in your packet. So this presentation will sound similar. It closely follows the presentation that you heard on July 29th during the financial update. The first slide is a summary of revenues from left to right. It shows the fund or group of funds, year-to-date actuals, our projected year-end total, the original budget, and then the dollar and percentage variance from budget. So all figures on this slide and in your packet adhere to accounting standards and compare projected results to the original adopted budget. These figures only tell part of the story, so to truly understand the city's current financial position, we need to look at the broader context. As we go through these first few slides, I'll provide some of that perspective. I'm going to skip the first line for now, and then we'll revisit that on the next two slides. So starting with special revenue funds, these are expected to come in 6.8 million above budget. This was anticipated, and it's mostly due to timing of grant and intergovernmental agreements. It's not unexpected or new money. The Water Fund shows a deficit of $210 million. This is not a concern. It was due to planned debt for the Thornton pipeline. We've planned to issue this debt in 2025, but based on cash flows, that'll likely occur in late 2026. The Stormwater Fund, I just wanted to point out the original slide in your packet. This has been updated in this presentation with correct numbers. Thornton TDA, our Thornton Development Authorities, revenues are higher than expected, and this is due to property tax. There was a restatement from the new commercial development for 25 Commerce Park. And then finally, I'll bring your attention back to the first row, the General Government. We're projecting a $10 million variance from budget. These next two slides step through that variance. The majority, 8.5, is related to timing of grants, revenue items that have a net zero impact overall, and non-cash accounting adjustments. After adjusting for those, we're left with 2.1 million in new and anticipated revenue. The 2.1 million comes from a mix of underperforming and overperforming revenue sources. Sales tax is projected to come in 1.5 million below budget. Other taxes, including property tax and motel tax, are projected to be $600,000 under. Citywide, our sales tax performance, with the exception of groceries, all other categories are underperforming what we initially budgeted. This is something that we continue to keep a close eye on. There are some positive offsets to these. Fines and fees are projected to come in 500,000 over budget. Ambulance revenues, 1 million over budget, and this is driven by an increase in service usage. We have investment income that's planned to exceed budget by 2 million due to higher-than-normal short-term investment rates. So once again, we're projected to end the year with 2.1 million in unanticipated new This next slide shows building permit activity as of July 31st. Permit activity is closely tied to revenues from permits, use tax, and connection fees. In 2024, you can see we ended our permits at the lowest in over a decade. As of July 31st, we've issued 377 permits. The year started off really strong, but the pace of development has slowed down quite a bit in recent months, so we're watching this closely. So that wraps up the revenue portion of the presentation, and I'll turn it over to Erica to walk you through the expenditure side.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. So similar to Kim's side of the House, talking revenues, I'll be talking operating expenditures. So what we're showing here are all of the different operating funds with actual year-to-date spend through June 30th of this year, and then projections based on that June 30th data. And then you can see in the two far-right columns are over/under budget, first in dollars and then by percentage. So you'll notice that General Fund is showing, we are projecting to be under budget by about 2.2 million. That's about a 1%, that's 1% under budget. What we normally come in at normally, or what we're kind of hoping for, is between 0.5% to 2%. So right now, we're kind of budgeting what we see in a normal year. Water, we're seeing maybe a little bit more savings at 2.2%. This is in general, the spring and early summer was pretty wet, and so we actually saw less water being treated. And so we saw a decrease in our utilities and chemical supplies spending, and that's where we're getting most of our savings in the Water Fund. Sewer and stormwater are pretty close to on track. These are really small funds, so any variation can have a large percentage effect. Sanitation, we are seeing savings. Mostly, that can be attributed to fuel and personnel savings. And then risk right now is tracking right at budget. So what are some of the takeaways from both Kim's side of the House as well as expenditures? I think really, the takeaway is that the economy remains somewhat volatile. We're seeing some impact, I think, starting from tariffs, where we're seeing sort of inflation creep up. We are anticipating some increased healthcare costs. Healthcare costs to our residents can impact consumer confidence in general. We might see further underperformance of sales tax due to that. And as Kim mentioned, we are also starting to see a slowdown in those housing revenue The second slide I've already covered about sales tax. Expenditures, and for good news, they are projected to come in slightly under budget, but we continue to monitor both revenues and expenditures closely. We'll be updating ongoing revenues and expenditures as warranted. And when we say that, what we're really talking about is if the changes have an ongoing impact, or we believe that it has a rolling impact into the future, we are updating those financial models regularly. Overall, our short-term outlook is improving, but we do need to continue our efforts to provide for that long-term financial sustainability, and we will continue to update both the City Manager and you, Council, regularly. So what are our next steps? Again, as mentioned, we'll continue monitoring both revenues and expenditures, continue refining both the revenue and expenditure projections for the year and the models for future years. We'll also be, next week actually, doing the 2026 Budget Recommendation Review. That includes a detailed review of both revenues and expenditures for all funds. And then the August financial report will be available in your packets on October 28th. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Any questions from Council? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, the question about the Risk Fund. So I know there's a lot of things that go into it. What is the component that causes the most variance?
For sure, the thing that causes the most variance are our Cigna health insurance claims. So we are self-funded insurance through Cigna. So our Kaiser, our Kaiser Health Insurance is not self-funded, so we basically pay in a premium that we're anticipating every month. But Cigna, we're self-insured, and so we are paying out actual claims. And so the way that we've budgeted that, these are the sort of early years of budgeting for self-insurance. I might be getting into too much detail, but these are sort of our early years for self-insurance. And so the way that we budget for it, and the way we've been planning for it, is we actually budget what are called max claims. And so it's basically the max amount that we could spend before our stopgap insurance kicks in. And so as we get further into the year, we can better project what those claims numbers are going to come in at. In all likelihood, we'll see savings in that account specifically, but just, it's very dependent upon the types of claims that we see.
Thank you for the detail. You said it was early years. How long have we been self-insured with the Cigna plan?
We've been self-insured, it's either been three or four years.
Okay. And so you expect it to stabilize as it continues, as we continue this self-insured plan? Is that correct?
I think that that is the intent of going self-insured, is that ultimately what it'll do is stabilize rates. I think, as Council is aware, part of the 2026 Budget Recommendation does include a sizable increase in the cost for Cigna. So we're definitely not there yet in terms of stabilization, but generally speaking, self-insured plans oftentimes sort of hit a spot where they become, where they stabilize.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Council? Thank you very much. All right. Item 12 is a consent calendar. Is there any member of Council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you. Approval of the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please read the appropriate titles into the record and poll the Council.
An ordinance submitting to the Registered Elections of the City of Thornton, Colorado, proposed amendments to certain sections of the Thornton City Charter to eliminate superfluous, obsolete, updated, and ambiguous language, clarify the applicability of antinepotism provisions, clarify authority related to intergovernmental agreements and revocable permits, clarify provisions related to budget procedures and control correct grammar and citations, conform to changes in the law, and make other non-substantive provisions. An ordinance approving a zoning amendment to amend the previously approved plan development for the Parterre subdivision, allowing the private recreation center within Planning Area 1A of the relocated south, to be relocated south of East E470 pursuant to Chapter 18 of Thornton City Code, Parterre subdivision amendment number one. An ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 2, Article 6, to update provisions related to elections. An ordinance amending the City Code to update references and terminology related to the reenactment of Chapter 18 and to relocate applied property rehabilitation regulations firmly in Chapter 18 to Chapter 38, Article 10. An ordinance amending ordinances 3712, 3713, and 3714, revising definitions and updating certain other references as required by changes to the Thornton City Code, Chapter 18 Development Code repeal and reenactment. Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Mrs. Lee, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13 is action items. Item 13A was removed from the agenda, so we'll move to Item 13B, which is an ordinance adopting the Second Amendment of the 2025 Budget, amending Section 1 of Ordinance 3710, making appropriations for the City of Thornton, Colorado for the fiscal year 2025. For all funds, except that appropriations for certain individual projects shall not lapse at year-end, but continue until the project is completed or canceled. Turn this back over to Erica Senna, Budget and Operations Director, to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. So tonight, I'm presenting the Second Amendment to the 2025 Budget. This budget amendment covers six separate requests. So the first item would appropriate $66,000 in the General Fund to cover the costs associated with additional traffic enforcement, specifically speeding, and is fully funded through a CDOT Traffic Safety Grant. The second request would appropriate $811,771 in the Governmental Capital Fund to cover the 2025 CDBG Annual Action Plan, which was presented and adopted at the July 22nd Council Meeting. This action plan supports affordable housing, homelessness services, and program management and administration. The third item appropriates $25,676 in the General Fund to cover the purchase of six additional body-worn cameras, and this purchase is fully funded through federal forfeiture funds. The fourth item on this budget amendment appropriates $2,498,366 to fund the solar improvements at the Thornton Water Treatment Plant. These improvements were discussed with Council on August 19th. Funding comes from unappropriated funds in the Water Fund. The fifth item funds an additional $230,000 in the Governmental Capital Fund to finalize construction of the traffic signal installation at 104th Avenue and Washington Plaza. So you can see up on the screen there, the entrance is the westernmost entrance off of 104th into the King Supers parking lot. This $230,000 request is 90% funded through the CDOT Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant, with the remaining amount coming from unappropriated fund balance. And the last item on this budget amendment appropriates $491,991 in the Parks and Open Space Fund to complete design and bid phase services of the Big Dry Creek Trail Project from 136th Avenue to 144th Avenue. This project is 90% funded through CDOT funds that were allocated by Dr. Cog, with the remaining amount coming from unappropriated fund balance. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from Council? Councilmember Martinez?
I just wanted to say thank you to Tanzi, Brett, and Erica for meeting with me earlier today to answer my questions about these, and also updating the presentation in the pack, or here, because it answered all the questions and more details about what's going on with these requests. Thanks.
All right. Any questions from Council? Councilmember Unrim, would you please introduce this item?
I'd like to introduce an ordinance adopting the Second Amendment to the 2025 Budget, amending Section 1 of the Ordinance 3710, making appropriations for the City of Thornton, Colorado for the fiscal year 2025. For all funds, except that appropriations for certain individual projects shall not lapse at the end of the year, but continue until the project is completed or canceled, and I ask for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Unrim, you have the option to go first.
No more further comments. The information that has been provided to us from staff is very sufficient. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll just add my thanks to staff as well. Please poll the Council.
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Mrs. Lee, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 14 is adjournment, and with no further business, our meeting is adjourned at 9:10 p.m. Thank you all very much.